Welcome to Park County's own Hurricane Hill Botanicals. Where it's been said you'll find the best handcrafted soap on the planet. In addition to that, we've got a great selection of essential oils, body care products, even CBD products. Can't miss out on our big selection of herbal teas, smudge sticks, even incense. Check our website for hours.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Yeah, this one I would have much preferred to be set through Florida someplace instead of here.
It's a rough life.
It is too. It's just, some things are just beyond comprehension, even in the past. You look all clean cut and stuff though, hey? What's up with that?
It's a relatively low-stress day.
You don't look like a lawyer anymore. What's up with that?
Turns out I'm a lawyer outside my job occasionally.
I can tell. Oh, nice. So we had a couple of things, and then I leave and go deal with that mess in my garage door. One of the rollers that came out of that, so I've struggled with that. It's been a tough last whole hour. So I suspect everything now can just go smoothly. There we go. All right, we had minutes, but we need to table those minutes. They aren't that quite ready yet. So we need to approve payroll amount of one hundred ninety-six thousand, three hundred fifty-two dollars and ninety-nine cents.
And it's pretty normal. I've got a grant on there, six thousand dollar grant that kind of raised to a little higher.
And I make a motion to approve payroll in the amount of one hundred ninety-six thousand, three fifty-two ninety dollars.
Second?
All in favor say aye. Then we just need to acknowledge received payroll claims accounts payable report, and that's ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred sixteen dollars. And I make a motion to acknowledge received payroll claims in the amount of ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred sixteen dollars and one cent.
And I'll second that?
All in favor say aye. And then when you have claims, they're a little bit. Five hundred forty-eight thousand, three hundred twenty-nine dollars and fifty cents. You got some highway supplies?
Yes, we had some contracts that we had to pay also.
Yeah, these first two years, that's true. Okay, I make a motion to approve claims in the amount of five hundred forty-eight thousand, three twenty-nine. All in favor say aye. I'm making an order myself. What are you thinking, Jason? Look stressed back there. What are you thinking? Do you need a chair?
Just thinking how upset you are.
No, no, I'm not upset. It's just, I actually feel bad for other people involved.
Did you get the other one, Bruce?
I'm sorry. All righty. New business, voting systems contract, January here?
Yep, right here.
So I guess filing's all done in noon today, so I had to push that back noon. Did you have anybody come in today?
We, yeah, we had several, four state delegates.
Oh, really?
One for trustee, our advisory board, and one sheriff.
Clerk's office was that if you were closed Thursday and Friday, because it was supposed to end Friday, the period for filing as a candidate for office, since we weren't open those days, it extended to Monday till noon, so that's, they came in today to get that accomplished. Okay, well, so what you got for us?
It's the contract for the voting equipment. I don't know if you got, I was told you guys need to sign it. Looking back, Stacy signed it and the election board, but I was advised for you to sign, commissioners to sign.
Right, we have to approve every contract. I don't know if we have to sign every one that we approve, but we certainly have to approve it, so.
Certainly we have the authority to sign it under this contract, it looks like. It just says authorized signature for Park County and then attest, so.
Okay, are you okay with the contract?
Yeah, it's just an annual contract, twenty-four thousand per even year to run the equipment, it looks like, or maintain it, possibly.
You guys have any questions on it? You had no concerns on it?
I had any concerns, no.
Is there a motion that you approve?
I'll go ahead and make a motion we approve the annual maintenance agreement with Michael Gove for twenty-four thousand. And I'll second that.
All in favor say aye. Okay, and you need just me to sign it, or all three of us sign it?
They just had it set up for one signature, so they could authorize you to sign it.
Okay. Let's have a motion that affect, and authorize me to sign this on our behalf.
Motion we authorize Jim to sign the contract for the voting agreement. Oh, second.
All in favor say aye. And it needs to be attested by the clerk, though. You've attested this one, not the other. Why don't you come in and do that in front of us, then? We know we're covered in. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it, Andrew. Thank you.
From having to go to multiple meetings to get signatures.
Okay, health department grant. Lenny sent that over. That is, I can't think of the exact number. I want to say a hundred thousand, right at a hundred thousand dollars. Hundred ten? Oh, there it is, yeah. I talked to her today about that. It is money, and I had the assurances from her that the money would be used to provide a county nurse, and the council has agreed to twenty-five hours a week. I think that was the number.
Yeah.
Yes, that's what it says on the.
Okay, and that should, that should get us, she thinks, six years eventually, so we should be in good shape for all the county nurses. So we just need to authorize and be acceptable to have that grant on behalf of the health department decree and pay for the county health nurse. So that'd be my motion. Okay, so my move is second then to authorize the reception of the grant for a hundred ten thousand on behalf of the health department, and those monies to go for the payment of a county health nurse. All in favor say aye.
And then you just signature.
And then Marathon Pipeline. Just notifying us to schedule right-of-way vegetation clearing, so they're going to be clearing the path along that pipeline. And indot letter for project on fifty-nine. Some of the structures that they had, had a pipe in, they were going to put a pipe inside, pipe lining, but the pipe collapsed last June before the piping, pipe lining could take place, and they're going to have to do the whole thing. And I could purchase some right-of-way, not much, seventeen hundred seven acre. And enclosure is expected to last two months. What I don't know, is this the one they did before when they closed the road before, huh? I can't tell, but it just says south side of fifty-nine, doesn't say.
I don't know, it's got to be right in their clothes.
If so, then we approved last time a strip of land that would be used by the emergency vehicles to go around that spot through two homeowners. We just have to make sure that they're aware of the closing coming up, and surely they need to notify them as well, but we can make sure on that.
Twenty-three miles north of the Clay County line.
You mean about that far? It's in that ballpark.
They worked on three, just for their.
Then we have some HUD guidelines. You can't, the show's nine hundred. Looks like it's right north of nine hundred south. Does that mean? There's photographs of the pipe. That's the strip of land along there.
This is, there's an electrical substation, and I inherited this, there's an electrical substation, and they worked on that. And something to it, because there's a big hit there. That's right where you turn through the bridge. Took more than following route, just right north of there, and they did work on that.
If that all did print out, here's a, we wish a copy has gotten some colors. So you might be able to see that one better.
And they did work on that there.
So, so they headed in?
Exactly where they had to work on it, and right there's looking south, that's that barn where you turned to go to Bridge.
So they closed for two months, sounds like. Next, we have a letter here, just of HUD guidelines, telling us how many households, how many people, the income for those, I think. Just FYI. Did we have clerk claims to deal with?
Yeah, like just get them copies off, like, holidays.
Are you aware of what they are?
There's one in regards to a vehicle, I think, with the sheriff's department.
Here's, here's all the originals. Sorry about that.
The other one was that law firm from California that you and I emailed. I responded back and let them know that we didn't have any ownership interest and that they filed a frivolous lawsuit, indicted by Judas Accord, you know?
Good, good. What he's talking about is, I got a notice, I don't know, a couple of months back or so, that we didn't even respond to. It was a photographer in California who saw a picture on Facebook that someone had posted, and the website was Park County something, but it wasn't Park County Incorporated, it wasn't Park County Indiana, it was Park County something, which someone just owned, but they haven't even used that for several years now. So it's an old picture, but they were gonna, out of the kindness of their hearts, basically, what he said, to give us another opportunity to pay them for the use of that, those several pictures or that picture several times. And so we didn't even respond at first. He's accusing us, obviously, of something that we are not responsible for, but then he sent another letter, so then I asked Nick if he'd respond and let him know that that's not our website. And really, I'll be more careful about accusing people before you do that through legal.
That was the gist of the email back?
Yeah, and so we suspect that'll be the end of it, but if they pursue it, we'll, we'll deal with them on the frivolous lawsuit kind of thing. It's pretty serious going, go attacking your governmental body or doing something wrong when you don't know what you're talking about.
Just a little legwork with a.
Find out, all I just told you, be nothing to find out. You just do a little work on Facebook to find out that it's owned by an individual, some individual, and hadn't even been active for years.
Just to look back into originals.
Okay, ah, I got you. Here's this one I do. This one is Kelly Browning was saying at the Raccoon Lake Lodge, when she was walking down the wooden deck toward the lake, when she slipped and fell on wet wood.
And then as of this morning, that one's been dissolved.
Okay, don't.
Crapper's calling me.
Don't know how that'll affect us anyway. And then what was the third one?
How would that apply to the county?
Yeah, wouldn't, rightful property, not a, yeah.
There's a shot, I guess.
Yeah, and that's what they are. You know how they are. It's just a shot, and then we'll sue the everybody and see if the chips may fall. Okay. I only had a couple of things in new business. I printed off a copy, you can all have, I think I had enough copies for everybody. The state now has passed a statute that requires that if we're going to allow zoo meetings now, we're talking about during emergency, emergency declarations of the governor, we, all we had to do was meet, and so long as the, say it was me on the zoo meeting, because I did one once with us, or twice, I guess, I backed out of one, but stayed in one. As long as you, you can see and hear me directly, and I can see and hear you directly, it counts, and it's still, it's still the way it is. But the council's passed one a little more restrictive, but the council just wanted us to know they're going to pass that resolution. You can make it more strict than that, you just can't make it any less strict than what the state is. So we just need to write one up, too. What it does, it authorizes, it actually lists who can be on a zoo meeting, so we can make it so we'll apply it to the three commissioners, we'll then have authority, provided that you can see and hear, and the person can see and hear, so. If, Nick, if you could do something with that, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I will.
Other thing I had.
Do they count towards the quorum?
Yes, yeah, as long as that is met. Before, it wasn't required to have statute in place or resolution in place to codify that, because it came under the governor's emergency declaration. But now that declaration will be going away sometime, then we need to have in place statute that says that we can do zoo meetings, provided those requirements are met. The one from the council is a little more in-depth. They require us actually that I, they already have a quorum in place.
They have a quorum there. I was going to say that number one, we can't even do.
Yeah, it kind of defeats the purpose. I happen to have a zoo meeting if you already have a quorum there, so for us, we wouldn't need that at all. We just need to, I think, nothing more than just saying someone's missing, so long as they are a direct and live feed and a direct and live reception, which should be okay to do those.
Jim, can I just make a comment on that?
Sure.
If you guys are going to do that, you might think about a way that you have some kind of a Zoom account set up specifically with one of you guys and the equipment here to do it.
Okay.
Like, we ran into you last time, like, I wasn't going to be here, and kind of scrounged around at the last minute, found somebody that at least could get it set up and going for you, that you're not dependent on.
Sure, Allison did it for us. She took around and did that, yeah. Yeah, that'd be, that'd be good, and maybe we can require, oh, Chris is gone, I was going to say require.
He's right here.
Tell him we're going to require him to be here to do anything actually we need and.
I don't think you might depend on either of us to do it, but.
Okay.
But just thinking about that, though, that there's equipment here and accounts to log into. You tried to use Lauren, but because she can't access her email outside of her office, it wasn't easy for her to be able to just come here and log on to a laptop and bring everything up, so.
We probably need from you just a lesson for the three of us on how to do that. I know we just need to use a laptop and set up the zoo meeting, nothing to set them up. I've set them up many times.
Yeah, you can wirelessly connect, and TV service got that set up, so.
So we just need a lesson from you, how to do that, and we take care of that?
Yeah.
But you're supposed to always be available to us.
Yeah, so you're just supposed to be here, yes.
Just to snatch to our fingers, just jump right up.
I try.
Yeah, yeah. All right, and the only other thing I have is that the check had not been sent out. You guys approved on January seventeenth, that forty-five hundred and twenty-seven dollars to go for the second set of doors, the one that needed all the repairs. And he asked about that, and I, I was sure that you guys had approved that, but the check has not gone out yet. But Laura, did you get that today?
Yes.
Okay, so the check is gone now, so. The third set of doors is done, and so I talked to them this morning, and they'll work out how to pick them up once they get, so we get up and down the street, okay, and they'll get the third set, and then we'll get that build left when that comes in as well. And that's all I have, unless you guys have any old business. I don't have any old business, so you guys have anything we need to revisit? All right, then, let's get through the department report, get people on the roads. So Jess was out here, but Jason is, all due.
Sheriff, will you pass out the billing for housing extra inmates?
Okay.
Pass that around. And then the annual bill report.
Panel ten had a story today, it's, no, Saturday morning that I saw, Tucker White was on the, on the air, about changes in the level six requirements, because small jails like ours can't do the programs, they're requiring that small jails do.
Right.
So he's expecting legislation to change so they, they won't house them. Is that what you guys are hearing too, that they're going to change?
That's my understanding.
Okay. Well, that'd be good.
My figures the other day were just over two point four million for the last seven years we've brought in for housing extra inmates.
Great.
And then I want to introduce our new deputy, Chase Blaine.
Welcome, Jase. Glad you're here.
Thank you, thank you.
He's one of, and then we're going to hire another one here soon, so.
Sometime we'll meet and I'll tell you stories about these guys. I've known them a long time. You'll have a little ammunition in case you should ever need it.
Absolutely.
That's all I have.
Anything you need from us at all?
Nope.
I understand it was a pretty, pretty easy snow, snowy event, not many slide-offs.
Just a few slide-offs, all we had. We were pretty lucky.
That's great.
The advance warning, I think, helped in closing down the roads.
Good, good.
Thank you.
Yep. We weren't the first to go to red, but we were like the fourth to go to red, but then we were joined by, I think, thirty-five other, other counties after that.
Yeah.
And Chris was on top of that the whole time. I ain't saying anything nice about him, but Chris was on top of that all the time, and, and any understands of the commissioner are the ones that have to approve making those changes, but he was ready to go, and one, just a moment, boom, then like, a minute later, it's done, so it was good to be in that situation. And then those are calls in case people ask, or the newspaper wants to know. We don't, we don't take those calls or making driving restrictions. We don't take those easily, and the commissioners always meet, always by either messaging or phone call, and get everybody's support. I had talked to Justin Cole that morning, and to Randy, and they were both out on the road. They were both looking to see, and they both thought we needed to go to the red, and then likewise, before we came off the red back to the orange, I talked with both of them again, and the commissioners, and they were aware, and then we made the decision then to go back to the orange level, so. Chris, or Jason, do we have any reason not to be, do we want to stay on orange where we are? Do we want to go back to yellow?
I moved this down to yellow.
Okay.
Because the roads are basically clear, and it's consistent with what everyone else was doing.
Okay, really probably need to run that, because we have to have that decision on record that we've agreed to that, so.
For orange?
For anything, any change of status on the travel, that has to come from us, so. Let's take a vote, a vote then. I'd make a motion that we change our levels, our travel status level back to yellow.
Second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're official. Thanks. Anything from you? Nope. Okay.
Appreciate it.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Randy is not here, but we have a piece of business we need to do. It's time for the bids to go for the paving and the asphalt materials. And so Randy is going to release these, this is to get our work done from the community crossings grants. So we have a, a DES number. What's the DES number? What is that? I've never seen that before. I've always seen resolution number, but I've never seen DES numbers for them. All it is. All it is, is, okay, all we have to do is, we have to, to approve letting the bids, going to let, and do the advertising.
Probably supposed to say RES.
That's what I thought it was, yeah, okay. So, so I make a motion that we authorize the highway department to advertise and then proceed with the bid letting on the paving projects.
Now I look at that quick before we do.
Oh, here's, I got copies.
And Jim, will this involve a special meeting for the bids?
I'm sorry?
Will this have a special meeting for the bids?
Yes, we're going to get that here just a minute, then. So to move this along, because we're kind of late in the month, because this is the seventh, rather than earlier in the, in the month to have our meeting, this has to happen here pretty quickly, so Randy asked if after we had this advertised, and they have two weeks to send their bids in, and then next meeting, we will open the bids and return them to the highway department, and then that'll give Randy a couple of days then to review those, to make suggestions for us when we come back. But to get it done by the end of the month, we'd have to have a special meeting, and he was asking about the twenty-third. And I don't care when we do that, the twenty-third is a Tuesday. Yeah, it's a Tuesday morning, and it shouldn't take us any time at all. I am good after about eight-thirty. Between eight-thirty and six, I am good. Does any time work for you guys to have a special meeting?
I hope they kind of got that day, so.
It just, it just won't take any longer than to come together, call a meeting to order, move to approve the, the bids, and then, or pick a bid and approve it, and then we can adjourn after that, so. Doesn't matter to be a bid what time of day it is. You guys have a preference? Are you going to be around? Are you going to be on the road?
I'll be on the road, but I'll just make it work, whatever works for you guys.
Well, Bruce and I can do it if he's available, and I can even come out to you, so. Oh, I ain't allowed to have it here, so.
That's an indot term, DES number is.
It is DES, everywhere in there, it says DES.
It's an indot term. I'm not familiar with it, I'm trying to feel. Division of Employment Security, I guess, is, I don't. That's an indot thing.
It's just, it's just telling them how to do the bids, like they all know three copies and all that kind of stuff.
So they have whatever works for you guys, and then.
We'll have to pick a date, because she's going to have to advertise it, since it's a special meeting, so.
The twenty-third is fine.
Nine o'clock? Okay.
He's back, Jim?
Ah, yeah, I got to sign the one, so. We approve the.
And Jim, is that going to be in this building?
Yes. Well, actually, we can do it in Laura's office. I'd say them have to mess with that. You want to do this meeting in her office. So I would make that motion, and then we schedule a special meeting on February twenty-third at nine o'clock in the auditor's office to deal with the, with the paving, paving bids.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So February twenty-third. And we'll have to make sure we advertise that, because we do for bid openings, so we'll, we'll have to, a couple of people anyway from the company can be there, but they can come there instead of coming here, and that would be fine. Let me get that in my calendar while we're talking about it.
So you're going to open bids that day? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes, February twenty-third. Open bids. Auditor's office. Nine AM. Dan, you want us to try to get? Well, we don't want to have any of those, because they don't, after our meeting, does that have to be four o'clock? You'll be here for that meeting, so you'll be here, if you need to stick around to look at them for a minute or whatever.
Yeah, you can do that, and then we can, we can map that. I'm just trying to make it easy on you, so. We all three need to sign this, and needs to be attested. This is the authorization.
Randy would have been here, but he had to deal with that bridge, didn't he, and we needed it as well.
Is it possible, and then we have to close?
Close it, yeah. Yeah, it's got a lot of damage. Upper cord broken.
How far out?
I don't know how far along it was, I don't know. And it is taken out, and every one of the cross ties is gone.
So it kept going all the way through it. Some people didn't get the driver's license.
Okay. Can you get that to the highway department then?
Aye. Aye.
Can you get that to the highway department? I knew you didn't want to call the other two. Okay. Chris, what you got?
I, I just had that. Glad I sent out to you guys, requested the, the status on the, the score for the fire departments. If you would sign that, if I could just get that back.
I need to send that to the insurance company. Do we have that? Would you put it?
All right. Be room out, there we go. So we don't have that, Chris?
Um, so that's just a, uh, this company bear a risk, they do, they grade the fire departments.
Gotcha.
And, um.
All this is, is a, a list of all the fire departments in the counties. Following agencies contribute to the fire protection in Park County. And then I just need to sign this, we just need a motion authorizing me to sign this on behalf of, of us. It's to the Community Hazard Mitigation Division.
I'll make that motion. Let Laura do the signings. And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. It's just a listing of all the, all the fire departments, so the insurance companies can have those. And they do rating for people in the, in the county, out in the county, of how close you live to it. If you have a city water available, if they have to do, suck it out of a pond, whatever they have to do.
And that, that's really to help out the dispatch, so we can see where our grading is and what we can do to improve.
That's it. That's it? Well, the other thing was that emergency declaration.
Uh-huh.
Oh, yes. And so we need to, I, I signed a, a copy of that. And I, I sent that, did you have the copy of the?
I have the copy of the signature paper. Did you, you said something needed to get added, Nick?
No, I just commented that on what I was seeing, I could only see three signature lines. There are, there are two signature lines, and there should have been three.
Okay. What are you talking about, just?
I was on my phone though, so I don't know if the formatting was off or not, but.
Just so everybody knows, to go from our, our normal level to either the categories, uh, short of the warning, the red, uh, we can just do that by consensus of the commissioners, then we let the emergency director know, and then he'll make that change on the, on the map of the state. The map, uh, the state keeps track then, Homeland Security, and it keeps track of what counties have what regulations. But if we go to the warning, now we're really restricting people's lives. Now we're telling them, and we can, we didn't this time, but we can restrict it to emergency vehicles only. And it says on the statute that, that may restrict to, we chose not to do that, but, but we wanted people to, you gotta go to work, you gotta go to work. We don't want to do anybody's lives, but that last step has to have an emergency declaration. So in order for us to do an emergency declaration, we have to have the paper and sign the paper for Chris then to be allowed to change that status. Since we weren't in meeting and, and obviously we weren't gonna get out of the meeting in that snow, snowstorm, I contacted the commissioners, they were okay. And then I, I got a copy of the declaration from Chris, and I signed it. But then I also sent him copies of the e, of the emails that I got from these, or messages I got from these guys agreeing to it. So he had a copy in his files that we had, all three agreed that we were gonna go to this status. And now, then we went that status, and so now we've signed the.
And in those type of situations, you have exactly the powers that you can use as the board president also to sign certain things.
I didn't know that.
Yeah. It's good to have a consensus.
I mean, I like this job.
Yeah, what I was talking about is just, it was teed up for two commissioners and it just needed all four.
I got you.
But it could have just been formatting.
The state just has a form, and this is really just closing the loop on this, so. The main reason for that is if we impact someone and, uh, and they want to file suit because of, uh, misworks or whatever, then, uh, then we have to show that we had, had the authority to do that, to our emergency declaration to do that.
So it must have been a formatting thing?
I think, yeah.
Yeah, because it's got three signature lines. Yeah, that is the only thing I saw, but it's hard to read on your phone.
It's good to go. Okay.
So you'll head to sign?
Yep.
That just kind of formalizes what you did. Yeah, believe it or not, you have pretty broad powers in certain emergency situations. Not to, not to help you out at all.
Does that include my wife, can I dictate her?
I'm not getting in the middle of that.
Okay.
I've made quite a living off of being in those kind of situations.
Yeah, yeah. I don't want to be one of them.
I don't want to do that.
But I'll tell her you said.
I'm on her side.
Thanks.
More house.
No more house, I'm sorry. That's it. Well, thanks, Chris, I appreciate you being on top of that stuff. All right. What else we got? Anyone else have anything for us? Yes.
Hi, can I do that?
Oh, I, I, I forgot you were actually coming, go ahead and introduce yourself. This lady is actually one of us, lives down around nine hundred south or so, which by the way, is a road that's gonna be, be done on this, this, this round.
But they're closing fifty-nine again.
Yes, they are. They don't want you going to work.
They don't, yeah.
So she works with Thrive, she is the new transport, uh, transportation, um, person with Thrive, which was West Central Economic Development Commission. So you are up, tell them, tell them what you like to do, Karen.
Absolutely. Um, good afternoon, my name is Karen Schneider's. My, I've only been with Thrive for a little while, um, I joined them in June this year. But actually, I came to Indiana after retiring from the state of Colorado, from the Department of Transportation. So transportation's been, uh, a passion career for many, many, many years. Only recently did I take over, um, for those of you who knew Dan Wagner, he, um, chose to take a cushy stay-at-home job and, uh, and be with his family more on a daily basis. And so now I'm the Director of Transportation Planning. And I am just coming here today to talk to you about a couple of things that, um, I'm looking at some opportunities that we have, and then to find out if there's any needs that Thrive can help you with. The first thing is, I'm very excited that you're getting nine hundred. My parents spend their summers at the, at the Fallen Rock Campground, so, uh, I'm very excited that that's finally getting paved, and I hopefully won't hear about it for a while. But, uh, anyway, um, Thrive, you know, we are a multifaceted organization. We have our area agency on aging, um, transportation planning, and our focus is more on the transportation data collection, traffic counts, which we will be focusing a lot on Park County in this, in the coming nice weather. Hopefully, we get that pretty soon. And then, uh, we have our economic development and community development folks, all of which are, you know, pretty, stand ready to help you guys. I met with Jim.
Been a while.
It's, we'll just say a little while ago, back in twenty-twenty-one. And, um, we were just kind of talking about different ideas of things. And, um, one thing that I wanted to bring up, I brought it up to, to Commissioner Mies, but, um, one thing I wanted to bring up was the idea, um, if there was any appetite whatsoever amongst this group to consider having the, um, the covered bridge routes designated as a scenic byway. And the, the idea behind this is that it would provide a little bit more of a, um, consistent advertising. The scenic byway program is, is throughout the country. It can be at a national level, it could be just a state scenic byway. But, you know, for me, this, this, this county has done so much work. And to me, the assets that you have here with the, with the covered bridges needs to be enjoyed year-round, not just a couple of them.
Well, and that's what we talked about, because the Convention and Visitors Commission does such a great job.
They do a fantastic job.
They do, and so good. And we advertise, of course, these routes on our website, that, that, that commission does such a great job. But this would be in addition to that. This would be to people who aren't on our mailing list, they don't know what Park County even is, they were not aware of, of CoverBridges.com or any of that stuff, would be another avenue. And it would be a, be a great addition to us to get possible people coming in, and use more people to travel our route.
And it would be another, shall I say, feather in the cab. There would be additional marketing opportunities that would, you know, being able to advertise on the scenic byway websites, et cetera. And for the most part, I, I spoke with the gentleman at Indot that is in charge of that process now. And we looked at, we looked at the websites and I was like, wow, they've got a lot of work done. So, um, I don't want to push it any further until I came and talked to you folks to see what, if there was any appetite for this. I didn't get a flow chart on what needs to be done. It is an application process, and it does take a little bit of time.
Is there ever any cost involved for the county?
I don't believe so.
That was my understanding, so there's really no reason not to participate in that.
Correct. It's a matter of.
I just sent you a thirty-page guide on national scenic byways.
Right.
And how it operates.
Okay.
So there's different levels. There's a national scenic byway, and then there's a state scenic byway. So it, it just depends on how intense you want to, you want to pursue.
Well, Gail and I travel a lot, and, uh, and seeing those designations on, on places mean a lot to us, because we know they've been traveled, we know that they are accepted for, for travelers doing those things. It's not just somebody says, well, you gotta drive down this road, but it's more of a specified thing.
That's the state one.
Okay.
Nice job.
So do you guys have any reason not to, not to hang down that, that path?
I don't, right now, I don't see.
Let's get together sometime after, after Maple Fair is over, uh, after March.
I can't wait for that, I'm so excited.
Yeah, we're getting close, we're gonna tap trees this weekend, I think, so. Yeah. So let's get together and we'll talk about what is involved with it. And then probably have you come, if you would not mind, to the Convention and Visitors Commission meeting. That's where we do all the advertising.
Happy to.
Like I said, it's just a tremendous group of people. I'm just, I'm just overwhelmed with how, how active they are, how good they are. I'm just a spectator, I'm just there, and they, uh, they do great work. Have you met Cindy before back here?
No.
Oh, well. This is Cindy Todd. Cindy Todd is our everything lady. She is our grant writer, she is our economic development planner, she is the executive director of Partnership Park County, which is our economic development arm, uh, for the Economic redevelopment Commission. So she has lots of hats. And so there may be things that she has on her mind that we might wish to pursue with you as well. And so if you guys could sit and brainstorm if that works for Cindy, okay, I'm making a meeting here for, but she is the one. She, she does our, along with the highway department. Usually highway department just did the community crossings things, and, uh, and, um, we asked Cindy, and she is our grant writer, uh, to, uh, participate in that. So now it's really an effort of all of them, and it's good, because each time somebody usually finds something that needs to be corrected. So it's been a good thing. And we've been very successful with our community crossing grants, uh, requests. So if you could get with her, maybe see what options might be here on mine, and just see another, another thing that we might have access to, to do something with, and.
And, um, you know, when, you, when you and I had the opportunity to meet, you said you wanted to be prepared for any opportunities that came along. And, um, one thing that just came across our desk was a, a grant, it was a twenty-five thousand dollar Cliff Bar grant. And it was for, for example, signage and wayfinding, and so this would have played very nicely into it. And it's all about preparing for these.
And those routes, we'll use the signage all the way around, so that would be a great thing, so.
Yeah.
That'd be something probably to speak with Cindy about and see what we need to do.
We would have to go through the designation first to, in order to put up signs that say, hey, this is a scenic byway. But to me, if we can, um,
Be great.
Get our ducks in a row, that would be awesome.
Let's begin working that after, after March, then after Festival of Overlook.
Yep, you bet.
Start working on that, and if it's okay with Cindy, we'll include her too in the sit-down, just see what we need to do, what the options are.
Okay, I will also.
She's really kind of sharp with those kind of things. She, she does okay, you know, for a country girl, she can go right. Don't tell her I said that?
Not at all.
Okay.
I will also try and get, uh, the gentleman from Indot who is in charge of the scenic byways, uh, his name is Brandon.
That'd be great, if we all get together.
And we can.
Oh, that'd be great, yeah.
He was very, he's like, oh, maybe.
We can even meet here.
Yeah, he, he was very excited to come.
And we can meet with the commissioners. Everybody thinks that commissioners can't come together for any purpose, have a meeting, as long as it's just fact-finding, we can. We can be in the same room, just have the fact-finding. It's silly to have to have three different meetings for three different commissioners, so. So we can meet, so if you want to schedule that with us as well, to see what, what the options are, well, that'd be great.
Can't take official action.
That's exactly right, yep.
That'd be pretty amazing to have those routes designated nationally.
It would be, yeah, it would be.
Incredible.
It would be, I mean, it's, again, it's just, wow.
Yep. All right, what else you got, lady? Anything else?
I'm Karen, and no.
Oh, I said lady.
Oh, lady, I'm sorry, I'm seriously. Did you have a good time with Florida?
I did, it was good. What, you know, what warm it should, should be, but it was warmer than here, so it was okay.
That's awesome.
So we have, uh, as these guys know too, uh, our, um, contribution to Thrive request is up, I think, make a thousand or less than two anyway for the year increase, because we have some, um, um, traffic and planning fees in there. Actually, ten thousand dollars, but spread out over three years, so it's like three thousand a year instead of maybe fifteen hundred a year for that part. And we've had that discussion before, it's really traffic planning for us isn't that big of a deal. It's not like we have to have traffic counts on every road, and we've got to replace, you know, a hundred bridges, and we have stoplights and, and all that to do. But it's one of those things where we are part of the system, and if that's, there are other places that maybe would not get as much of benefit as we get out of, like with, uh, the, the, uh, senior meals and, and transportation and those kind of things. So it's kind of a miss, a, a mix and match of, of things. And so even though we may not get ten thousand dollars worth of benefit out of that one part, it's our, it's our share of paying for the whole, whole package, so that's what we're doing. So let me prove that at some time and get that.
So a couple of things that you may want to know about, um, as I'm taking over the unit, I am, the previous director was very pigeonholed into the data side of things. He, he loved that world. And I'm more of the broad planning side of it, um, so we'll be taking a look more at, um, safety reports. I'm looking at having somewhat of an annual report to each of our.
We've never had that before.
Right. Um, I want to have some sort of a, um, because we have the accident data, and, you know, we want to look at that on a five-year rolling basis.
I'm on the LTAP board, uh, we also have access to all of that, crash sites and crash zones and all those things, hot zones for LTAP as well. So I think we can really make some significant changes over the next few years on how we do things, not on the road, but on how we do things.
Sure.
That relationship of, of, um, visionaries at one point and doers on the other point, that's our relationship with Cindy. We can sit around and talk about how we'd like to see something done, but don't have a clue how to do that, but she does. And if she does it, she figures it out.
We figure it out.
So.
We figure it out.
So she'd be the lady to talk to and those kind of things.
Okay.
Okay.
And if there is anything, now that we're kind of coming out of the winter, if there is anything that we can be doing to help you, please let us know.
And I don't really, and that's why we need to talk, because I don't really know what the options are, what you can do for us, what we can benefit from, so.
Yep.
Our highway department and us and the county, for, you know, the last fifty years, has really been just pretty much self-contained, you know? You just have this much money and this much need, and you do what you can with what you've got, but more things are opening up, so.
More things are opening up, and particularly with the, um, with the infrastructure bill, um, you know.
That should be a big one for us.
It should be a huge one. I know that there was a lot of questions about how to maintain the bridge, the covered bridges specifically. And the program that that would fall under, um, saw a very significant increase in, um, the amount of support. Now, I didn't look at how much is coming to Indiana from that program, but there's opportunities there. As long as we can package them in such a way that it doesn't look like, you know, we're, we're not pigeonholing ourselves into the program in such a way that.
It'd be great to have a long-term plan in place, that we can actually move towards, that'd be great.
Yep.
Okay. I appreciate you coming.
One other thing that I wanted to bring up was, um, some of the small towns, particularly in Clay County, received notification from Indot, um, about their Americans with Disabilities Act transition plans. Um, and then their Title VI conformity plans. I wanted to bring that up.
They've done that in Park County too, Rockville and Marshall, both.
Both of them have, okay. Um, if we're, we've got one under our belt now, and we're getting ready to do Knightsville. So if there's any, um, what we're looking at is, you know, how can we help with training and the reporting and everything else that goes along with it after the, um, the initial plan is done, and.
That's why it's so important, I think, with this new relationship with new leadership at, at West Central and now Thrive. Because even though we had those potentially there to deal with, we had no idea what the opportunities were. And that's what we need to know, what the opportunities are that we can take advantage of. So we'll be working with you closely and try to figure out some things that we need to be moving toward.
Um, one good example is Rose Holman is obviously looking for, um, projects for their kids to work on. And we just put forth a package deal, um, from one of the towns to say, hey, we need these engineered, these improvements engineered, and hoping that.
We used them before with trails, a couple of other things, so, yeah.
And so we're hoping that this will end up being a massive win for the town of Harmony, because they'll get some of their engineering taken care of, and then can put money onto the road. So if there's no other questions, thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming, appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. You feel free anytime. You come back.
You bet.
Okay, speaking on bridges, um, the CBC typically every year uh has uh um spent around ten thousand on typically a bridge, but it could be some other park or some other function. The idea is as long as we're spending that Convention and Visitors Commission money on assets that promote tourism, that's our job, promote tourism. So we are looking to do that again. If you remember, we did, we did a roof last year. We did the Sim Smith Bridge roof last year. And that's done now. It's what you guys did. And so we have those projects every year. This year, we're gonna have a little extra money, it looks like. Um, it's been a great year really for uh, for uh innkeepers. Uh, even with the COVID, it's just been good for us. We, we were not down at all. And so we may have more. So I have been talking with uh Kathleen Alfke, Kathy Alfke at Mecca. She's uh been doing the new Historical Society stuff there and they really got enacted with the uh one-room school there. And she was seeking a grant. And we talked about her. She was seeking a grant to uh re-sign and paint the Mecca Bridge. Um, not sure that that money would be, but she was surprised to find out that, well, you can do that, but it's still a county bridge and the county has to authorize, you know, who's gonna do it and what's gonna be done with and all the specs and stuff. So I have not taken it to the CBC yet, but I intend to, as long as it's with your approval. Are you, you guys okay with us, if, if we have the funds to do it, um, to authorize uh, um, the re-siding and painting of the Mecca Bridge?
And. I, I don't have a problem either way. I don't.
Okay, I just, and, and you, he was gonna, um, your son's gonna run some numbers up. We need to get some bids then to do that, how, how that's gonna be. But if that's okay, we use that for a target this year and work on the Mecca Bridge. Just because Mecca's kinda coming alive, uh, those types of things with the school and activities. They've got a great program down there, the uh, the reading program, boot camp, reading boot camp's what it's called. And they just, they do a great job. They, it's free to kids. They come out to school. They have reading programs they go through and it's just been a great asset. And so it's good stuff. So if you're okay with it, I'll, I'll take the CBC and see if they're interested in taking care of the Mecca Bridge. Cuz we can't obviously change a thing without commissioners saying that's the bridge we wanna work on. So if that's okay, we'll go down that path soon as we got. Okay. Anything for us?
Sure.
What do you have? What you got?
Um, well, right now we're at five hundred and thirty-nine enrolled four acres.
That's great.
We're about ninety away from where we were last year, but with unpaid and incomplete, I have faith that we'll be.
It's been around six hundred for years, hasn't it?
It has, but I.
Oh, it'll get, it'll get there, yeah.
And like everybody says, kids are resilient. They, they still come out and they still enroll. So, yeah. Um, with Health and Human Sciences, Gail's got several programs going on. She's got Be Heart Smart, Motivated to Move. She's doing some luncheon learns with Scott Pitt and the library. Um, Kurt's doing some events on grain ban awareness. Um, and then he's also doing a statewide sugar maple.
You see, I talked to him about that originally, yeah.
Yeah. Um, and then he's working on a partnership with the Rotary and doing some more community guarding programs. So, yeah, we're getting it done.
Good. So you're comfortable with how things are?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Fully staffed now? Everybody in there?
No, not yet. We've got one out.
Okay. What is that position?
Well, we're, yeah, we are, we're fully employed.
Oh, you are?
We've got one currently out for a while.
Oh, okay, I got you. I was thinking we had one, since we hadn't filled yet. Okay.
Oh, no.
Anything for mushrooming?
I don't think so. Appreciate your support.
That's, that's absolutely one of mine. And then these guys too, they've both been involved with it forever. I mean, that is a safe place for kids to go and, and take, and do stuff and learn good stuff, learn responsibility. It's just a great program. It's, any programs I think we have, that's one we really have to make sure it's healthy and going forward. I think we were probably all involved. Four acres, you look how good we turned out. That was a good example, right there.
Yeah, watch out.
Models, models. Cindy, ma'am, what you got for us? Anything?
Well, I'm taking off my Partnership Park County hat and coming as a, I'm gonna give a park board question. Um, the River Walking Bridge?
Yes, I thought Diane Barlow today.
Okay.
Now, go ahead. Tell these guys that.
Well, I was just saying, cuz this approached yesterday. Vermin County got their side open now. And so there were some questions about allowing emergency vehicles, you know, across the bridge as needed. And the way it's set up now with the concrete barriers, you cannot.
Right.
Drive through there intentionally.
Yeah.
But they had a different alternative, doing some removable ballast. And the question came about is the park board is saying, we don't own that bridge.
Right.
So who owns the bridge?
How that works is, and we looked at, when we did the works, we looked at putting those bollards in and they are, they are detachable. And a lot of places have those. Could be on our side, it's important for Tim to, you know, for you to understand and the county to understand. That is, that is uh, the entire um walkway is Park County, so we do control that. Um, we did not take the bridge. We were offered the bridge by, by DNR. I had no interest representing the county. I had no interest in taking that bridge as a donation. And, and uh Bob Bronson was kinda surprised by that, that we wouldn't take that bridge. And I said, there'd be no need for us to have that bridge because someday our bridge would fall into your river and you would expect us to take that out. Maybe years from now. But he's, oh, no, we'd help you with that. You can say whatever you want, Bob, but I'm telling you, someday that bridge is gonna fall in the river. So I don't want that. But I said, we would do the work. And uh, so we got the grant then to do that project with. And so uh, uh, just handful of us got that project done. So really, I appreciate Vermin County coming to us and coming to the park board because they really have no say on that bridge, even though it touches their side of the river, has no say in why can it can't. That being said, sometimes you have to reiterate those things. That it's not your call. It's gonna be our call to do. And really, on our behalf, it'd be our call to make. Um, they may need access to their trails because at this point, there is no access from the other side to their trails. So if somebody got halfway down that trail and went down, need emergency, there is no place there for an ambulance or a, a four-wheeler, anything to get to them. So I think it's a reasonable request on their behalf to have access. What will have to be done with that is that we'll have to take those concrete pieces out. We had to put concrete uh blocks there to uh, to keep uh motorcycles and four-wheelers off and running.
Motorized trucks, yes.
And not, not, it's all non-motorized, motorized vehicles now. They moved them now. Vermin County took those off and put them to the side so they could have access. They need, we suggested, Paul suggested they put those back. And they would, but they don't have that equipment anymore to move them with. Uh, that needs to be fixed.
That's on the other end.
On the other side, yes. When we put those up there, somebody had built a little ramp. We had some boards cross there. And they put, took the boards down off the fence and made a ramp out of the boards to, to jump the motorcycle over the ramp. So anyway, that's gonna happen. So I am not at all, I don't have a problem, um, as long as, as long as Vermin County has the funds to change what we have. If they have the funds to put bollards on both ends of the bridge. Uh, and typically those come with a lock. You simply unlock them and they slip right off. You drive right over the, the piece stuck in the ground. You probably want some of those in places for ramps here. So it's not a big deal to do those, but I just want them to understand that'd be their cost to do that. Are you guys okay with them installing little bollards on that bridge too?
I don't have a problem with it. I figure out it's gonna be a key issue too.
Yeah, it is.
I mean, it's.
I would imagine they would give to the emergency personnel in Montezuma, assuming first responders would get there first if it's an emergency.
Yeah, they'd have to, have to have it in the.
Fire department.
Is there any kind of weight restriction input on that with loaded concrete?
Uh, we, we really, we really, uh, we can probably get one from, from DNR on that, but it was not a concern. The piece of equipment that we carried, we drove back and forth to do that and carrying a pack of concrete when we're doing it, so that wasn't a problem. So I don't think, we obviously wouldn't want a fire truck. It wouldn't need a fire truck. But maybe an ambulance or four-wheelers go across, that would be fine. So we just need to talk.
I just didn't wonder what's the liability of.
Yeah.
Might want some kinda dream, agreement drawn up on who's in charge of what and, you know, who's gonna hold.
I knew they're kinda waiting to hear from Cindy about our feelings on that. Our feelings are that, if I'm speaking for you guys, that we're okay with that. We're, we're on board with putting those detachable bollards up. So we know they have to have access, at least for now. And if they get an open access on the other end by hills and hill, then they don't need to come that way anymore. And, and we wouldn't do that anymore, but, but.
Really, I mean, just personal opinion, aesthetically, that would look a lot better than what's there today.
Yeah, yeah.
Cuz it's very off-putting, the way it's set up.
But they're located where they are, so, so act, uh, wheelchair access can get through and they're sizable. But yeah, they, they would look nice. And we talked, we talked about putting those that one time and then we went with the other, but we built a, had to build a handicap parking lot there instead. And we ended up with about seven hundred bucks left out of a hundred fifty thousand, actually what our grant was. And so, but it wasn't enough to do the bollards. So we.
But I, I do agree with Nick. We need to get something grown up and make an agreement with him before we just say do it.
So we talked to him. We're all for it, but.
Well, I think that really the question was, who gets to make that decision? And no one, yesterday was.
Uh, so that bridge access is ours.
Who does it?
And the town, and, and, and Montezuma understands that too, that it's not, not their access. It's, it's.
Yes, that, they were very clear to.
And they, and they don't want.
They could not make a decision.
Yes, they couldn't. So they did good. They're good people. So that would come, that would fall on us. So I'd say they just need to come up with, with a plan as soon as possible.
I think they were gonna reach out to maybe Big Inch and someone else about even making them.
I know the place we bought the concrete from in Indianapolis, I know they make those things too. So if Big Inch doesn't do that, then I know there's plenty of places to make them.
The ones down at the Wapa Shiki Trail there, have you seen those?
No, I have not.
They're like a, a metal post and there's something down at the bottom and it, it folds down at the ground. So if you had an emergency, you just fold the two down and drive something in.
Oh, okay.
And that'd probably be something that Big, Big Inch would make.
Yeah, it could be. As long as we can lock it in place. Somebody won't can't just gotta bolt.
Fold it down and go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But again, a key issue.
Tough for us too, that we have to work out, 'cause we have benches along both sides. And so you got the benches. You gotta worry about that too. So I, I don't really see anything bigger than a four-wheel, maybe taking somebody out there if they have trouble with.
Yeah, and the town owns a, like, little cabota that can travel there that they said they, you know, for emergency purposes could be taken across there.
And I think that probably needs to be in the language when Nick writes something up, what, what is allowable on there and what's not.
Yep.
But it was exciting that that site's open now and there will be to get.
It's all ready, ready stone all the way up. Looking good. They can't get all the way through to the, across the railroad part. They sell some bridges they have to build there yet, but that's in the plans. They'll get that, they'll get that.
And they can't cross the railroad right where their trail is, so they're gonna have to go down the railroad to Alta where there's a public crossing area.
Tim and I have had that talk because the railroad said they can't cross there. And it's like, well, we can cross there. I mean, it's just, we just do.
They just have to take it down and then let it cross.
Cuz the railroad wasn't willing to work to spend any money to help them make a crossing. And so to me, if you have to play hardball, you just say, well, we're taking our trail at this spot right here and they're gonna cross your railroad. If you'll make it safe, we need to build a crossing there for them to do that on. Because they're going anyway, so it's on you. But the whole idea is try to get along, try to work out and try to, try to play nice. And so. It's grant money for them so they can, they can make, spend that money to get down to the access point and get across. So that'll work out okay. Railroads are always difficult to work with, always difficult to work with.
Well, they had to work through the levy issue too with DNR.
They've, they've done a good job. It's taken a long time. I heard from so many people complaining about, well, when are they ever gonna, well, first off, it's none of our business.
They said they took it off our shoulders. Now they're at the trail to nowhere.
Oh, good.
That's us having the bridge to nowhere.
We have the bridge to nowhere. Yeah, I heard that a few times and I asked somebody about that. I said, well, do you ever go to Sears Tower? Well, yeah. Back at Sears Tower. Did you go up to the top? Yeah. Well, what'd you do when you got up there? Did you just go into space or what did you do? Well, we came back. Yeah, that's what you do. You walk across the bridge and look the river and you come back. That's kinda what you do there, yeah. Some people are really reasonable. Don't quote me on that. Okay. Anything else we uh need to cover? Anybody got anything for us? Hi Pam?
Hi.
Any gizzards yet?
Off and on.
Really? Ours? You getting some? Do you have a day when you have them?
No, we never know from week to week.
Really? Geez. Okay.
Yeah.
Are you planning on festival with gizzards this year?
We're gonna try. I'm thinking maybe we might add chicken wings and maybe we can offset one. Just get what we can get.
You only have a limited amount of gizzards. Make sure that my name goes first on the list.
Daily.
Daily, daily. I don't think that's an unreasonable request. All right. If anybody's got anything else, is there a motion to adjourn?
I can motion adjourn.
Okay.